All right, it's been 9:30. Reverend Rollmack, would you come forward and lead us in the invocation, please?
It's good to be with you. Let us join together for our invocation in prayer or reflection. Many in our community today celebrate Epiphany. Thus, no matter our tradition, we can all pray or reflect this day for our own epiphanies. Epiphanies for wisdom, epiphanies for understanding, epiphanies for appreciation of the work and labor of our elected officials and our administration and their support staff. Particularly, we pray for our first responders, and particularly in the climate of recent events, we ask God's blessing upon our police officers. Let them know that they are honored and appreciated by our community. We pray also for an epiphany of an awareness for justice, so that all may be treated fairly, whether they are in the majority or the minority, whether they are minorities based on ethnicity, political persuasion, or orientation. Today, we pray for the epiphany of guidance, so that our labors and our decisions here today will continue to help our community thrive. Today, we recognize those who serve and those who lead. Bless them this day, and bless this gathering, for this is our prayer. Amen.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we open the regular City Council meeting of January 6, 2015. Mrs. Vok, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Roll?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mayor Winger?
Here. Under preliminary matters, I think there are two proposed agenda changes, if it is the pleasure of City Council. One is to move Mr. Wright up. I'll let Mr. O'Connor explain that, and also the matter that Mr. Comet has, which is aligned with that, that we received on Indian River Shores. That's the first. Did I get that proper? Is all the elements for Mr. Wright?
Actually, we were going to also move up the electric utility system study, where we need a vote from the council to approve us to negotiate with the public services, but I would like him to address that as well, because that's part of our rate adjustments and how we'll be moving forward.
All right, that's the first adjustment. Is that satisfactory with council?
Yes.
Okay, saying no, no problems with that. We'll move that first. And then the second thing is Mrs. Graves has got her item, and I think it would be appropriate to move that second, which is 9B1. In light of we have people here, and the meeting may be rather lengthy, is that satisfactory?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, then you're moving these under, obviously inappropriate, under public comment, but it would need to be under an item where we could vote on.
No, just they're speaking under public comment. Ms. Spurlock to speak, rather than waiting to address that issue way down. We can still vote down later on, but allow them to speak now, so that they're not stuck the whole meeting.
That's fine, just trying to understand where we're going. And also with Mr. Wright, there are several items that require a vote. Are you going to be moving that voting issues up as well?
Mr. O'Connor?
As far as I'm concerned, you don't have to move the voting issues up. It's just that we would like to address and maybe answer any questions that people may have at that point.
Thank you.
But since he's involved in all of those issues.
Thank you.
All right, is that satisfactory?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Mr. Kramer?
Well, I'd like to have our police officers come forward, if I can. I think in light of recent events, we thought it would be appropriate to have a proclamation, and apparently the governor of the state of Florida thought it'd be good to have a statement as well in supporting our police officers. And so, we've decided to do a proclamation in accordance with the Florida First Responder Appreciation Week, and I'll go ahead and read this, and Chief, I'll let you take over after that.
Thank you. Good morning.
The proclamation states that whereas first responders are a vital part of our community, standing ready to deal with the emergencies, and volunteering in our schools and community organizations. And Florida's first responders include law enforcement officers, firefighters, and EMTs who bravely and selflessly risk their lives every day to protect Florida families, visitors, and businesses. And Florida's first responders do not hesitate to risk their lives in order to save the lives of others, and their commitment to continuing training, skill enhancement, and inter-agency coordination make them vital members of every Florida community. And the state of Florida is grateful to the men and women who perform these vital services at great risk to their safety and well-being. And acts of kindness and appreciation from citizens from first responders provide them needed encouragement and support to confront the dangerous and uncertain situations they face. Therefore, the City Council of Vero Beach does hereby proclaim the week of January 5th through the 9th, 2015, as Florida First Responder Appreciation Week, and encourage our citizens to take time out of their day to show first responders and their families how much we value their services to our city, county, and state. This week will be an opportunity for Florida leaders to demonstrate appreciation for all men and women who protect and serve our state as first responders, and an opportunity for Floridans to say thank you to our first responders who keep them safe. Chief?
Well, thank you very much for reading that proclamation. I actually just received a letter from Governor Scott this morning with regard to that. You know, 126 officers were killed in line of duty in 2014. That's 24 percent increase from 2013, and even more so, 50 officers were killed by firearm. That's a 56 percent increase. This has to stop, without question. We had 15, I believe, across the country ambushed, and we recently, within a month or so, and I think that's what prompted this letter from Governor Scott once again, this in November, I think it was the 22nd, Deputy Smith in Leon County up in the Tallahassee area responded to a fire call and was ambushed and killed, and then on the 21st of December, Officer Condeck Tarpon Springs on the West Coast responded to a noise complaint and was ambushed and killed. So, I believe that's what prompted that once again. Again, the numbers are way too high, ones too many, and we certainly appreciate Governor Scott and Mayor and City Council for acknowledging this week as well. We always acknowledge our Memorial Officer Memorial Week in May as well, and we look forward to that. The officers here in Vero Beach, I just can't say enough good about them, rightfully so. I'm very, very proud of the men and women that protect us day in and day out. I came back from the holiday yesterday, and I had five letters from the community to read to staff, and then, of course, issued to the officers with regard to the, the letters were from people that had somebody pass away during the holiday, and we responded, and they just wanted to talk about the professionalism and the compassion that the officer showed. We had a couple of burglary complaints where a widow did not know what to do over at St. Francis Manor. She called, the officer was there in minutes, knocked on her door, spent time with her. She called back a few days later. That same officer went back once again. She was just so happy and proud of the service and, again, the professionalism. It just made her at ease and things like that. So, our officers do that day in and day out, and when we think we're not getting the compliments, we are. And I do share them with city lines, as you probably see them from time to time. If I sent them all over, we'd probably shut down the system. And that's a good thing, so maybe I'll try to do that. But I'm just very, very proud. I'm honored to be a part of the city and this agency. I actually will have 25 years in a couple of weeks, and it doesn't seem like that, although I have Gray. But I'm just honored to be here and represent the city and the Police Department and the fine men and women that protects us day in and day out. Once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to public comment. Remind you, if you would, keep your comments brief, and there will be public comment after any item, any and every item on the agenda, so there may be, that may be the best place to make your comment. Anyway, I opened it up to general public comment. There being no pre-listed. So, who would like to make a general public comment? Mr. Hattie?
Hello, council members. I was here at a meeting yesterday in which a decision was made as to who to recommend to represent the city, and it was interesting that it took so long just to get past the statement that a decision was going to be made, because your lawyer kept saying, "No, no, there was no decision going to be made," because the council was going to make the decision. Leave it to lawyers to twist words beyond recognition. It's what they do best. What I asked the decision-makers was, I commented, first of all, that there were no council members there to listen to what was going on at the meeting. I further commented that it was interesting, there was a selection, I think it was, was there four contenders for the, four contenders, and not one of the contenders was here, so there was no opportunity for the public to find out anything about the contenders, any questions they might have. And certainly, when it involves the electric issue, it involves the biggest dollar amount in the city, and the public once again was left in the dark and the cold. The, one of the things that I said yesterday was that if you're going to hire a lawyer, that there's some fundamental threshold questions that need to be asked. You need to understand the matters that are before the court. You need to understand what the matters of law are that are being questioned. And anyway, so I had some questions, and I think that fundamental questions need to be asked before you make such a decision. And I know that you're not supposed to mention names, but Pilar Turner was the only council member when this particular lawyer was hired. And I said, "Hold the phone, kids. Wait a minute. Can we at least have a basic talk about that?" You know, if you're going to get a divorce and you're going to hire a lawyer, the first thing that you really need to ask about your divorce lawyer is, you know, where they stand, you know? Are you going to hire a divorce lawyer that thinks that the first thing we need to do is slaughter the counterparty, right? Put them in the poorhouse, do whatever, you know? Let's attack. Or are you going to hire a divorce lawyer that says that mutual respect and coexistence is probably the best approach? And depending on which one of those lawyers you hire, you're going to have probably a very different result. So, I asked what the threshold questions. What are the questions? It took a while to get an answer, but what are the questions that are before the court? What's at bar here? What's the matters of law that we're talking about? What's going on here? And after a lot of uneasy looks from the decision-makers, I finally got some answers, and, well, the questions are four. And the first question is the Bureau of City electric rates are outrageous, you know, and we're going to sue over these rates. Well, the city of Vero Beach is about average in the state, so to say, or to try to sue us because our rates are outrageous, is bizarre if we're average in the state. Do I think we ought to have FPL rates? Yeah. And I remember very well a meeting in, I think it was in April of 2008, in which the City Council was presented with a contract, and the consultant stood at this podium, and they said, "This contract will give you FPNL rates or below." You can go back and look at the meeting. That's what they said. Here's the contract, kids. A lot of black marks in it, remember? Here's the contract, and what this contract says is that you're going to get FPNL rates. Then we fast-forward to when the contract took effect and to today, and does this contract give us FPL rates? No, it doesn't. Why not? Because somebody switched the contract. Because the numbers that were presented to the City Council at the time aren't the numbers that are being used to establish our rates. Are our rates high? Yeah. But if you're going to sue somebody over the high rates, why not sue the responsible parties, and the responsible parties are the ones that lied about the numbers that were blacked out or changed the numbers that were blacked out? In either case, it's not this City Council, and it's certainly not us, the taxpayers, that should be sued. And if anything, Indian River Shores is borderline frivolous lawsuit on that question. And every single rate payer, whether they live in the city or outside the city, certainly wants lower rates. Then the other question was whether or not those that are outside the city should vote in a referendum. And I'll tell you, you City Council members can solve that one right now. Just agree. Any rate payer on any referendum that involves the electric, any rate payer can vote, period. Make it easy. That ends that lawsuit. Then there was another question that your learned attorney said, that there was a question as to whether or not they were being denied their rights because they couldn't vote for council members, because they have no vote. Well, a couple of things. Number one, I mean, get real, first of all. Anybody that wants to have a vote for any elected office, and I don't care what it is, dig deep into their pockets and throw some money out, and you'll have a vote, because that's what buys elections, is money. And Indian River Shores, to say that those rich people up there don't have some influence on an election is bizarre. But be that as it may, I would suggest that this City Council end that particular item of the lawsuit by agreeing to allow Indian River Shore, Indian River Shore-registered voters be allowed to vote in Vero Beach city elections. I know that, first, that sounds a lot bizarre. I got Jake Kramer looking at me like, "What, are you crazy, Mr. Hattie?" No, I'm not crazy. If that's what they want, let them vote in city elections. But things need to be fair. This country is based on equality. Let them vote in our city elections, so long as we have the authority to vote in their elections. Right? Make it mutual. If that's what they want, okay. You can vote in our elections, and we get to vote in yours. In fact, we could just join the whole cities. Call it Indian River, Vero, Shores, Beach, whatever you want. I don't care. But it's bizarre that the taxpayers in Indian River Shores, the taxpayers in the city of Vero Beach, and the rate payers are paying these people $200, $300, $400 an hour. Over what? Over what? There are easy answers, and you don't need to be hiring another attorney. I went to negotiation session, and that was also bizarre. We're going to arbitration session, and we're going to arbitrate this whole thing. And what we had was, we had the county, and we had Indian River Shores, and we had the city, and they all sat up there, and they all pontificate. They all give their canned speeches. There wasn't any arbitration involved, was there? No. Yeah, council member shaking her head, "No," because there wasn't any arbitration. There was no arbitration. You want to hire an attorney to settle this whole thing, hire me. I'll settle it. I'll bet you Indian River Shores would withdraw their silly nonsense about voting in Vero Beach elections if we said, "Fine, okay, no problem. We'll vote in yours." That'd pretty well end. Do you think they'd want us to vote in their elections? I'll bet not. And why can't they vote in city of Vero Beach elections? Because they don't live here. I can't vote in New York City elections anymore, because I don't live in New York City anymore. I don't live in New York, and I can't vote in New York anymore because I live in Vero Beach. And Tammy has it as a matter of record that I live here, in case anybody's wondering. I'm not going to give my post office box or anything else, but Tammy knows I've lived in the city of Vero Beach for well over 20 years, because I go to her office every year. I attest to that. What are the other questions? Did I miss any of the questions in the lawsuit that we're hiring a lawyer for? Any council member know of anything that I missed? I mean, you're going to make a decision. I hope you know what the issues are. Did I miss anything?
I think you covered them.
Pardon?
I think you covered them.
You got them covered?
Yeah.
Well, the expulsion of the city from the territory was the other issue.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah. There's a territorial question, and this is, this is also probably bizarre. And, you know, the whole thing is about, the whole thing is about rates. And, well, the whole thing's about money. If the rates were comparable to FPNL, wouldn't be anybody complaining about anything, would there? No, no, they wouldn't. And the City Council in April voted, of 2008, voted on a contract, was waved around, and that contract said that the rates we were going to be charged were equal to or less than FPL. It turns out, the contract went to Boston, Massachusetts, to a consultant. Nobody had, nobody kept one here, which I would argue somebody should have got fired for. Somebody did leave the city.
Mr. Hattie?
Yes, sir.
It's been 12 minutes. If you could wrap up, I'd appreciate it.
Is there anything that I've said that's not important?
I, I, I think-
I just wondered.
No, I think going back to 2008 isn't useful.
You think going back to 2008, when we agreed to a contract that gave us FPNL rates is not important, but we're not getting FPNL rates. Why aren't you, instead of worrying about hiring a lawyer to sue another city or to countersue another municipality, why aren't you concerned about enforcing a contract that the City Council agreed to?
We're not suing. We're defending.
You're hiring a lawyer, you're hiring a lawyer to defend and wind up in a countersuit, probably. No, I understand. You're not the plaintiff, we're the defendant. I understand.
We can't just go on and just pretend and not hire an attorney.
No, you can't, but you can present reasonable solutions, and I haven't seen that done.
Brian, you've been here for a number of years. You know we've tried to present reasonable solutions. This is not about getting lower rates. This is about FPNL taking over our territory.
I understand. I don't disagree with you.
Until that happens, we will continue fighting.
I don't disagree with you. You're right. It's about money. It's about FPNL taking over. But if we had FPL rates, there wouldn't be any question at all. There wouldn't be any lawsuits.
But they'd still be trying.
No question about it. They would.
And they'd still have to hire attorneys to defend.
Because they're a corporate entity, and that's what they'd want to do. But we're not in a lawsuit here with FPNL at this point. We're in a lawsuit with another political subdivision who's suing us over ridiculous nonsense, and there ought to be some, and there are some easy solutions. How about you offer them, allow them to vote in our elections, and they, we get to vote in theirs. Do you think that question goes away, or do you think they'd agree to it? It's a reasonable solution. If it winds up before a jury sometime, and the jury says, "Well, hold on a minute. The city of Vero Beach offered some equity here."
I would probably disagree with that.
You don't think that's equitable, or they've built norms, and then we-
I think Indian River Shores is suing us because FPNL can't.
Right.
There's contractual interference issues.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, because lawsuits aren't always what they appear to be. But nobody now, and nobody on past councils in recent years, not since 2010, has any council member been willing to take on the real culprit. Not as, I mean, I understand individual council members have done individual things.
This matter does come up later in the agenda. We can-
You want to beat it up later on?
All right.
Mr. Mayor, with respect, we moved some items up so that those people could have a chance to speak before general public comment, and I'd like to move them forward.
Is that agreeable with council? I think you're talking about the-
With Mr. Wright and then Ms. Spurlock, so.
All right. I guess, Mr. Wright, you were the first one I mentioned, or you're the first one on the agenda, so you may come forward. Thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, citizens. Glad to be back one more time. Going to cover a few things today. I thought I'd cover an update on the status of the various legal proceedings that's going on. And you have two documents that we have discussed previously following the mediation session. They come out of mediation session, but we just want to get the council's final sign-off on those. And then, on the city manager's business, you have the question of hiring litigation support for the, for the civil litigation, defending our, defending our position in the suit filed by Indian River Shores. And then finally, I think you discussed moving up the system optimization study. That's coming, the recommendation coming out of an RFQ process. So, I'll start, and I think Mr. Richards will come up when we talk about the-
Please proceed.
Optimization study. We, our petition for declaratory statement, framing simple issues, basically asking the Public Service Commission to declare that the county's franchise agreement has no effect on our ability to continue serving once their franchise expires, has been docketed, assigned a docket number. It's scheduled to be heard by the Florida Public Service Commission on March 3. As of now, that's all that has happened. Parties may intervene up to January 13. That's driven by the rules regarding declaratory statements in the Florida Administrative Code. That's a week from today. I expect the county will file something, but I don't know for a fact whether they will. If they do, we will then have a week to respond, and we will be prepared to do so. The county's petition for declaratory statement is still pending at the PSC. It is presently scheduled to be taken up on February 3 following the deferral that occurred on November 25. We'll be prepared to present our positions, as will some of our amicus parties, including the investor-owned utilities, the co-ops, and the municipal utilities, be prepared to talk at that meeting as well. The mediation, as you know, occurred on December 17, and the outcome of that was a conceptual agreement that has now been reduced to writing between and among the town, the city, and the county, that the town will continue to abate its lawsuit until March 2, that we will, we, the city, will not object to either the town or the county investigating alternatives that might hypothetically, in their view of the world, become relevant if they were to prevail in the litigation, to seek alternate providers of electricity to our customers who are located in their geographic jurisdictions. We were very clear, both in the interim mediation agreement and in the waiver letter that I drafted with Mr. Kement's help, that we're not waiving anything, and that we don't concede at all that they have any right to do anything before or after the franchise agreement expires. That would impair or otherwise interfere with our ability to maintain, operate, and serve, and operate our system where it's located in their jurisdictions. We also commit that we will continue doing everything we've been doing to try to ameliorate the situation, which includes trying to lower rates, negotiating with a UC. We'll go back to FMPA, as we committed to do at the mediation session. We will complete the rate study, which does include some potential rate reduction measures. We will come, ideally, depending on your decision today and on January 20, proceed with the system optimization study that we hope will identify some additional rate reduction measures, and that we'll continue looking for anything else we can do to lower rates. We will also continue to pursue a referendum. We've agreed to that, as you all know, on December 2nd. To pursue the referendum, although that, that's kind of in, you know, we're not spending any time on the referendum. We're spending- We're, we're spending some time on working toward the utility authority, which we will be doing with the town and the county, because of the obvious rational position that it would make sense that if we're going to have a referendum, that we ought to know what the utility authority is going to look like. So, we've agreed to do all those things. The county asked that the mediation agreement include a provision that they could go ahead with their scheduled PSC consideration on February 3rd, and we said, sure, it's your petition. It's PSC's jurisdiction. They can do what they want. You can do what you want. So, you have the intermediation agreement in front of you, and you have the waiver letter in which we are basically agreeing that they can talk to others, they can issue RFPs if they want to with FPL or any other potential supplier, and everybody involved, which is us, the town, the county, and FPL, will agree that nobody's going to lodge any complaints about, against anybody else for any of these conversations that may occur. We're not going to sue FPL. We're not going to sue Duke. We're not going to sue the town or anybody else for tortious interference or breach of contract or anything else. And FPL, assuming they sign off on the, on the waiver letter, will make the same commitment, that they won't sue anybody for interfering with our contracts with them, the asset purchase and sale agreement being chief among them. So, so that's what you've got in front of you there.
I have a question.
Absolutely, Mr..
When I'm reviewing this waiver letter, I did find the absence of any contact at FMPA to make sure that FMPA doesn't accuse anybody with interfering with existing contracts. During the negotiation and the, or the arbitration meeting, it was noted that FMPA would need to be, would need to submit a waiver letter as well. Have you sent one to them or drafted one?
No, and I will tell you that both Mr. Rheingold and Mr. May have signed off on the letter that you see. I don't see that FMPA has any cause of action here, because their contracts with us are completely separate from our contracts with FPL, which are the contracts that would be potentially interfered with by the subject negotiations between the town and county on the one hand, and FPL and other potential suppliers on the other hand. That really doesn't have anything to do with our contracts with FMPA. I know that FMPA was mentioned, but I think that when we, the attorneys reconnoitered on this, I think we realized that FMPA does not need to be here.
And we have agreement of that fact from Indian River Shores and the county.
Well, if I can interject, Chef. We did bring up the fact of FMPA and OUC at the mediation, and it was their choice to exclude them from this letter. The other parties said, no, we don't need them in there, and that was their call, and we didn't disagree with them.
Somehow, I still don't remember it that way, and I think, I think we need to make sure that that's clarified.
Okay. I guess, I don't know that we, in the intervening three weeks, that we specifically addressed that question. What I can tell you definitively is that we exchanged two or three drafts of this letter with the county's attorneys and with the town's attorneys, and they have signed off on this letter specifically.
All right. Once again, I'm still asking that we make sure that we clarify whether FMPA and OUC would have any action, and we require waivers of them as well, moving forward.
I have a question too, Mr. Mayor. In the mediation agreement number six, it says that we're going to give a status of efforts to lower rates, including efforts to sell its electricity, electric utility system to FPL, and that this report will be provided by the city. Can we also get a report from FPL if, where they are at on the sale, to hear them chime in?
I don't think it needs to be part of this agreement, but I'll be talking with them naturally in the context of our obligation under this agreement, and I'm sure they'll give us something, an email or something that says where things are.
Well, just some sort of record that they, I mean, if they have come up with any ideas that we haven't.
Sure.
Mr. Kement, is there any action needed from council later on in this, or not?
Well, I, I think later on, we would ask that the council okay execution of these.
You know, I, the only comment I would have, Mr. Wright, is that it seems like the city has offered a great many things to settle the lawsuit and is moving forward conscientiously with those. That would be my only comment. I mean, I think the letter exhibits that.
Well, you know, I agree with that. I think we're, we're trying to do everything we can to lower rates within the constraints we have. We've offered to have the referendum that they have asked for in their pleadings, and we've offered to work toward the utility authority that they say they want in their pleadings. So, I think we've done a lot.
All right. Do you want to move on to your second subject then, or is there further on this? No, I'm talking, you have the agenda of three things.
Yes, sir. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm with you.
Mr. Hedy, Mr. Wright has the floor, please.
I'm with you, and I don't need to talk about the status of the litigation or the mediation or the documents that you'll hopefully vote to sign off on so that we can execute them later in the agenda. So, I'm ready to move on to litigation support, council, and then we can invite Mr. Richards up, and we can talk about the system optimization study.
Proceed, please.
Thank you. As we say in my law firm, I'm the PSC guy. Administrative practice before the PSC honestly is unique in and of itself. It is a specialized subset of administrative litigation. I have done other administrative litigation, but the bottom line is that I am not a civil trial attorney. If we're going to be defending this lawsuit, and it looks more likely than not that we will, in court, we feel we need real trial attorneys, courtroom attorneys. Accordingly, we sent the RFP out. We got four responses from Gray Robinson, Schutz and DeBoen, Greenberg, Troick, and Frost, Vandenboom. They're all very qualified firms. The, you know, we read their materials. I spoke with principals at all four of the firms, and I know that Mr. Kement spoke with at least one of the principals at one of the, one of the firms. I'm not sure if he spoke to any others or not. Anyway, we, as a selection committee, Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Kement, and I met yesterday along with Mr. O'Brien, President, and Ms. McCarty, President, to discuss our rankings. Interestingly, we, we all started with different rankings, and I think you've been provided with our ranking sheets, but after 45 minutes or so of discussion, we settled on a consensus to recommend to you that we hire the law firm of Frost, Vandenboom, who have offices in Bartow and Gainesville. Their lead litigator is John Frost. He's an extremely accomplished, very successful litigator. He spent 14 years with Holland and Knight before the last 33, going on 34 years with his own firm now. He's, he's very successful. I knew who he was before he knew who I was, because he gives lots of money to my law school alma mater, the Florida State University College of Law, and he's got his, got a really big painting of himself and his daughter there. So, he's, he's an outstanding attorney. I'd be very happy to work with him, and that, that's our recommendation. I think you can vote on it later under the city manager's business or whatever your pleasure is.
Yes. What we will be asking the council for is that we would bring back to the council a letter of engagement with that firm, but this would authorize us to go to that firm to obtain that letter of engagement.
All right. We'll, we'll deal with that later on in the meeting. Go ahead.
Okay.
I have one, I have one question.
Go ahead, Mr. Old.
This, this lawsuit has the opportunity of getting, becoming big and getting to different levels when we challenge this whole idea of our service area. With this law firm, it's fairly small. Would this law firm be able to handle it?
I'm confident that they can.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, it's, there are very interesting questions here. I'm 100% confident that I've got the utility issues covered. The, the interesting questions are relationships between different units of local governments, there are local government law questions, there are constitutional questions, there are potentially very significant real property law questions. Actually, if, if we get into that, my law firm, Gardner-Bistwener, is a predominantly real property law firm, and if necessary, we can bring in some of my folks on that. So, those, those are really the major areas of where that litigation will head, and then stranded cost and other things. If, depending on how everything goes, that's, that wanders back, or that moves back into the utility sphere, which is more my daily work. I'm confident that, that I can work with these folks, and that they can handle it and will.
Okay.
Mr. Old, just to give you a little insight, at least from my thinking part of it, one of the issues you have, you can go out and, and hire a large law firm, and you go from division to division to division of those firms, and they specialize, or you can hire those people that are specialties in the areas that you actually need right now, and that's the route that, in my recommendation, we have chosen, that if we need a trial attorney, we will have that. We have the environmental, I mean, the PSC and the regulatory attorney already on, on the case. And if we need any other type of specialty, we will bring those on as needed, as opposed to having a very large law firm that has a lot of those resources that you would receive that, you know, they could call it anytime, but actually, they're broken down into cost units as well, so it really makes-
I just, I just see this as maybe getting a lot wider, and I'm just wondering about how you thought that out.
Yeah. And I think we, as Chef said, we will be able to address that.
Mr. O'Connor, isn't, is it not true that one of the other finalists in this rates were approximately twice as high as the one you're recommending?
Yes, sir. There was one, and it was a very large law firm and very, very capable, and they would have assigned us two attorneys, but then there were also the, the other part of that, and they were like $7.85, I believe, an hour.
$7.85 and $4.40 for the second chair.
But, but I'm not sure we needed all the specialties that that law firm would have brought to the table at this particular time.
Well, we need very good representation, but the people's money is, remains very important.
Yes, sir.
And the larger the firm, sometimes you're paying for overhead rather than the work that you're getting, so I like a personal touch. I think we've gotten that so far.
I think they've got 10 or 11 attorneys, and we've got 11 attorneys in my firm, so I'm happy with small firms myself.
All right. I guess your next subject?
Yeah, I, I thought maybe Mr. Richards could make the basic presentation, and if you like, I have a little bit to add on the, on his recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, and all council members. Item 7F on the agenda that you moved up on the agenda is a recommendation from an evaluation committee for ranking for engineering firms, excuse me, engineering firms to perform an optimization study for the electric utility. And you can see the details of the evaluation there. We are following the Florida statute for selection of engineers, which requires that the firms present their qualifications without regard to pricing or consideration of pricing, which they have done. It requires that the, that the municipality rank those firms based on qualifications, and that, that negotiations for the top-ranked firms start to see if you can come up with a contract. If not, then move to the next-ranked firm. So, the purpose of this presentation today is for our recommendation to you for a recommended ranking order, and we did have eight firms respond to our request, one withdrew, so we had seven to consider, and the three top ones in order of our power services, GDS and Burns &amp; McDonald. And so, our request today for you is to approve that ranking. Upon your approval, we will return to the top-ranked firms, see if we can negotiate a contract with them that will include a scope and a pricing, and we'll bring that back for you for your consideration.
You'll bring, when would you bring that back?
Hopefully, the 20th.
I think we could do it on the 20th, in two weeks.
Who was on the ranking committee, please, Tom?
It was Mr. Stradley from the Utilities Commission, Ted Fletcher, the Director of TND, and myself, three of us.
All right. Mrs. Turner, please.
Yes, thank you. I guess, reviewing the rankings of these, and I guess I'm still a bit perplexed anytime. This is going to be a large contract, no question about it. I mean, if you're going to really try to get some optimization, we're going to be looking at spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, most likely, in a, a contract of this scope. And yet, I'm reviewing rankings, and we have one, one number. I mean, there's no set criteria for how we evaluated them based on whether it's in our personnels, other success in other projects. I mean, I would have expected us to have some firm set of criteria, and that each firm would be evaluated on those, and not a single number thrown at me.
Well, there were some detailed rankings done, a methodology that's developed by the purchasing department that we've probably, we assigned each company a ranking based on our best judgment, there were certain weightings, and I don't remember them, I don't have them with me, guess, today. But those were used to come up with the ranking that we did.
I was going to say, look at a single number, Mr. Richards, not very satisfied. I would certainly like to see, yeah, the backup or how this was developed.
We can certainly provide that for you.
Thank you.
Further questions of Mr. Richards or Mr. Wright? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next topic.
Excuse me, Mr. Wright, still, once again, too, on this legal services. I mean, yeah, this ranking, too, to me, is a joke when we're looking at, you know, committing significant amounts of dollars of taxpayers' money without saying, well, I talked to the guy on the telephone. You know, I'm sorry, that's not an adequate evaluation of an attorney.
Mr. Frost has agreed to be here on the 20th. You'll have the opportunity to talk with him at that time before you would sign any engagement letter. If you want more, tell us what you want.
I think it would be a bare minimum to have a chance to, yeah, have them presented in the council and us to question them, but I mean-
We will do that. Mr. Frost has agreed to the 20th.
All right. We'll move on to the tobacco issue. I, we are earlier decided that the agenda was going to be the way it is. You've had 14 minutes at this point. We'll move on to you next.
Mr. Mayor, while you have the attorney here, I just have a comment on something he made, and a comment that he made, and a comment that Councilmember Turner, and he's right here at the microphone.
I'm not going to recognize, I'm going to live with the honor, with the order that we set.
It's fine.
Chef, did you have something else, another comment?
I was, I was simply going to add this regarding the, the system study. I know at least five of the principals in Power Services personally. I've worked with them for 10 years, principally on undergrounding matters and some related matters in Florida. Although they're based in North Carolina, they have at least two very good people, including Lloyd Schenk, who has a long career in Florida and working for FMPA, and I understand he's to be the principal on the study, and I just wanted to offer my, my, my personal support for their company, but it's your decision.
Mr. F. Mike, my, my issue is not with Power Services. I mean, I worked with them earlier on when they did the initial rate study for us, gosh, five years ago, and I'm familiar with, with having Power Services in here. You know, the question is the documentation, you know? We are public servants. We have to do our job, and we have to justify those decisions, so.
Well, Mrs. Turner, I, management is getting things done through others, and we have a team that we have appointed, the five of us, or four of the five of us at least, Mr. Old was not here, and the team is captained by Mr. O'Connor, and we have Mr. Wright, we have Mr. Kement. And I do not want to get back into the system we had a number of years ago, where every question is looked into great detail by city council. We're not equipped to do that. I have perfect confidence in, in Mr. O'Connor and the people that he selected, namely, Mr. Wright and Mr. Kement. So, unless there's some grievous reason, I have to say that the job is to get it done through the people we've appointed. That's how I feel about it.
Mr. Mayor, it's not a grievous reason. It's transparency. It's the responsibility that we have of handling the taxpayers' funds. That's it. It's just saying, hey, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, but let's lay it out so it's clear that there's no question.
All right. We'll move on to the next, please come forward.
Good morning. Thank you very much. My name is Leslie Spurlock. I'm the Tobacco-Free Partnership and Quit Doc employee here, and we handle tobacco prevention here in Indian River County. I do have other speakers here this morning. I have Mr. McPartland, I have Ms. Sule, and I have Dr. Hummel, who is the CEO of Quit Doc.
How much time do you going to need? Just tell me, so I know.
I will, I'll give you like 30 seconds, and I'll give the rest of them their, you know, their time.
Okay.
Okay? But this- But this prohibiting the use of electronic cigarettes where conventional cigarettes are prohibited, brought forward by Ms. Graves, is an absolutely wonderful idea. The limit, there is no limit actually on advertising. There is no limit on packaging or flavors. There's no ban on sponsorships. There's no ban on them giving this away at the Hibiscus Festival, okay? Free samples. So I applaud you for doing that. And at this time, I will have my cohorts come up.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Bob McPartland. I live in the city of Sebastian. And I also work for the Department of Children and Families. This is a very simple issue as I look. You know, a lot of these people, they're experts on what's going on with the electronic cigarettes. It's monkey see, monkey do. Kids see these things, they want to do it themselves. It's kind of bringing back cigarettes and making them sexy almost for kids, is if they can puff on these items in the theater, in a restaurant, in the park where tobacco use is not allowed, they see it, they want to do it. The cigarette companies are in cahoots with these cigarettes. To get them hooked on that, these cigarettes are a little more money, so then they go back to the old tobacco product. And it's just, it's no good for the kids to see, so it's a perception problem as well. I mean, Tobacco-Free and the Subs Abuse Council of Indian River County have done a tremendous job in lowering tobacco use among young people and even adults over the years, and this is just hampering those efforts. So if Ms. Graves was great in bringing forward this issue to just make the rules the same, these cigarettes, they try and establish themselves as a cessation device, but in order to become a cessation device, you would have to go through FDA approval. So they said, ah, we can get around that, we'll become a tobacco product. So then they want to be like a tobacco product, but they don't want to follow the rules that other tobacco products have to face. So I think this ordinance will get in line with wherever you can't use tobacco products, you can't use these cigarettes. So thank you very much.
Good morning. Dr. Barry Hummel. Just to refresh your memory, we looked at this about a year and a half ago, maybe 15 months ago, and you felt that, at the time, that it wasn't appropriate maybe to equate the use of electronic cigarettes with regular tobacco. So three things have happened since then. Number one, the use of electronic cigarettes by youth nationally and in Florida has tripled in the last year. Data that I've seen from Florida shows that it's now the number one, electronic cigarettes are the number-one form of tobacco used by middle-school students in our state. It's second among high school students only to hookah, and there's some debate as to whether the hookah statistics actually reflect hookah pipes or hookah pens, which are electronic cigarettes named hookah. So we're not sure that the electronic cigarette market hasn't taken over all of our youth market in the state of Florida. The second thing that's happened is that your work on age restrictions a year ago, as one of many communities who took the lead on that, actually prompted the state to do that. So the state legislature actually took your leadership and said, okay, that's a good idea. We'll make an age restriction statewide. It's my belief that as cities and communities start to do this with the equating electronic cigarettes to cigarettes with the Clean Indoor Air Act, that they may actually add electronic cigarettes to the Clean Indoor Air Act at the state level. So your leadership, again, can lead that charge. And the third thing is an odd one. When somebody takes one of these devices out now, I'm not sure what's in it and not sure what's coming out of it. And I'm just talking about whether it's nicotine or whether there's heavy metals or other chemicals or cancer-causing agents. I'm talking about other drugs. I'm talking about hash oil. I'm talking about marijuana. I'm talking about synthetic cannabinoids like K2 and Spice. So when somebody waves it at you and says, well, there's no nicotine in this, you haven't told me what's actually in it. And we just went through an amendment, a ballot amendment, where we almost had medical marijuana. So let me ask you a question. If you can use this device anywhere, and we pass medical marijuana in this state, what stops anybody from pulling one of these pipes out anywhere and saying, well, I have a prescription? In a workplace, could be a school? I'm not sure where this is heading. I would be proactive. I would go so far as to do what Lighthouse Point did, but I'm a little bit aggressive. And it is completely say, well, you can do that, just not in a public place. And they've actually banned the use of these devices in all public places, beaches, parks, playgrounds, indoors, outdoors. I think the Clean Indoor Air Act is a cleaner solution because I think that's easier for people to enforce, but I think a stronger stand might actually be needed for this down the road. So thank you for your time.
All right. Is there anybody else out there that wants to talk about this issue before? Go ahead.
I do. I'm Vicky Suley, CEO of Treasure Coast Community Health. Both as a medical professional, a parent, and a grandparent, I can only take 30 seconds of your time to say, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Thank you.
All right. Any comments about the tobacco issue before we go back, I think, to the electric? All right, Mr. Hedy.
Councilmember Turner, thank you. You're absolutely correct. And just because you have some lawyer that tells you something, that you have some good common sense, you have some good business sense, you've demonstrated that you have the ability to think in your years on city council, if FMPA has no clause of action, then FMPA would have no problem whatsoever signing the release. Absolutely bizarre that they should tell you, oh, well, no, they don't have a clause of action. Does anybody in their wildest dreams think that Indian River shores would have a clause of action against the city of Vero Beach because they weren't allowed to vote in our elections? No one would have ever guessed that. FMPA is absolutely involved, and if you're going to get something that's going to prevent someone from coming back to us at some time in the future for torturous interference, then you ought to be able to get FMPA to say, yeah, you kids over here, you're working out your problems, you're fine, we're not going to come back and sue you. And you're absolutely correct, and you should insist on it and not listen to the very poor legal advice that you paid a whole lot of money for. And the, it's interesting, the other law firm that's being suggested without you having any opportunity to question, without, it's interesting that they did donate the proper money to the proper places. I'm glad to hear that. That's generally speaking how things happen anyway. And the rate study, you're going to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on a rate study? I tell you what, I'll give you one right now. Our rates are too high. Study over. Right? And when you open up your electric bill and you see that the fuel surcharge is more than the electric you concerned, that's too high? That needs to stop. Study over. It's just saved you a couple hundred thousand dollars. Just stop. Just stop the nonsense. And how can you stop the nonsense? You can enforce the contract that the city council voted on back in 2008, which purportedly gave us FPNL rates. And you chastise by the mayor. The mayor chastises people when they don't support his particular political point of view. He does it all the time. And I'll tell you, it's offensive when I speak and the police officer comes up the aisle. The camera doesn't catch that, but I know exactly what that's about because I've been arrested so damn many times here by an intolerant mayor. It's offensive. You want to give a ward out to police officers in the beginning and then have the mayor use them as the Gestapo? It's offensive. And yes, regardless of the mayor's point of view, it is the city council's position to question these things. Whether he thinks you should question everything or not is not important to me because he would question nothing because he has faith in everybody and he lets everybody just go do whatever they want to do. Thank you for questioning things. I appreciate it, and I'm sure that there's other taxpayers that do appreciate it. What they probably won't appreciate is the couple hundred thousand dollars that will get rolled into their electric bill because you want to have a rate study. I can tell you what the rates are. They're too high. Study over. I'll send a bill.
Thank you, Mr. Hedy. To correct the record, I made no motion to the police officer. I didn't notice him coming forward. You're not going to be recognized again.
I really don't give a flying hoot whether you recognize me or not. The police officer did come forward, and they do it all the time, and it's outrageous and it's disgusting. You, what do you mean, you didn't know it? Are you blind? Then maybe you ought to pay attention to what's going on.
Mr. Hedy, please. Mr. Mootcher.
Mark Mootcher, maybe I should give him a post office box.
Yeah.
617 Indian Lilac Road in the city. I didn't plan to speak, but sometimes when I'm sitting here through all this, I have some things I want to rebut or comments I want to make. Getting to FMPA in the letter that was just discussed, I'm, give my standard disclosure, I'm not a lawyer, I don't play one on TV, I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night or any other night. But it seems to me that FMPA would be interested in Indian River shores wanting to leave because they always tell us that each and every one of our ratepayers is crucial to their bondholders' interests. And so if we lose 2,000 or however many it is, to them, I would think they would have some interest, at least enough to get a letter from them saying that they're not going to pursue that at the present time. Something Brian said that I wanted to clarify, and I hear this all the time. People talk about city of Vero Beach rates being average. Now, the FMEA rate reports, as they give it, they calculate an average. They spin it heavily by adding fees to rates at which point they're no longer rates. It's totally unweighted. I've told you all this before, and I don't know whether you understood it or not, but it's totally unweighted, so it's totally worthless. They take Florida Power and Light with 4.6 million customers and add that to, what is it, Florida Community Utilities Northeast Division, which serves Amelia Island and Ferndita Beach, maybe has a couple thousand customers, if that. They give them equal rating, equal weighting, ranking. So an average of that type, you can see, anybody can see, anybody with a third-grade education can see is totally worthless. So I don't want to hear about averages until you start weighting them, okay? And besides, averages, it doesn't matter what the average across the state is, we are totally surrounded by Florida Power and Light. Doesn't matter what's going on in Tallahassee or what's going on in Key West, we are totally surrounded by Florida Power and Light, so that's our market. And I just wanted to say that. Another thing that Chef mentioned was Mr. Schenck, the principal that's going to be involved in our optimization study. I looked at their offer, and the thing that jumped out at me was that he was with Leesberg Electric. He ran Leesberg Electric for so many years. And Leesberg is much higher than we are in rates. He also was president of FMEA, our friends in the lobbying firm in Tallahassee, and was an officer with FMPA. So, you know, I don't doubt that the committee did their job and ranked them as the best firm out of the three, but I think the choice of principal attached to our account is a little strange. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, as always, Mr. Mootcher. Okay, further public comment on any subject? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. And are there items that any of the council members would like to pull and discuss further, please?
Just a brief question. I think it could be addressed without pulling the items. On items five and six, just the dates. The first one, I guess the lease agreement for Representative Mayfield begins December the 1st, 2014, and we're just getting that to council now?
Yeah, I think it took a while to get it back from Ms. Mayfield's office.
It did, Ms. Mayfield. And it's an annual thing that we do, so no one...
Yeah, I have no problem with the agreement, it's just the timing of it. And the Indian River Farms Water Contol District permit?
Yeah, that actually, I'm the one that made it retroactive because they want us to pay for four years of rent for all the time that the pipes have been in their right-of-way. And Rob Bolton verified the dates and everything, and he has no problem with it, with us paying the back rent. But in order for finance to be able to cut a check, they need something in writing to show that we're obligated to pay those four years of rent. So that just brings us up to date. Next meeting, we'll probably be bringing you the agreements that we just got for this year.
Thank you. I have to clarify why I had this contract that was retroactive.
Right. We just, I just wanted to make sure that our, that was retroactive so that it covered us in making the payment that is due.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the passage of this, five, nothing. All right, it's 10:35. We can probably do some of the ordinances under 4A before we break, if that's satisfactory. All right, I will read 4A. These are the final readings, right, Mrs. Bach?
Yes, sir.
They won't come forward again. All right, 4A1 is an ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, amending the text of the land use element of the Vero Beach Comprehensive Plan to include an objective and policies for the original town neighborhood and technical appendix, Roman numeral four, providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date requested by the Planning and Development Director. Staff comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, I'm Tim McGary, the director of planning and development for the city. This is the ordinance that we transmitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity several months ago. It has gone through its review process. We had received no comments. If you'll recall, at the first reading, or the transmittal hearing, we had community church representatives stand up. They, they never got back to me, but I've talked to the church since then, and it does not have any impact on them. So, I mean, negative impact on them. So they seem to be satisfied with that. The only thing I'm asking you to do would be to amend what we have there. Basically, the timeframes we have for doing a special study was going to be in July, but we are about to undertake a comprehensive update of the comp plan, and some of these actions will be done during that. So I would rather defer the date to December, the end of the year, 31st, 2015, rather than the July 15th.
Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
That update of the comp plan, that's required by state statutes.
I have to, yes, we're at the end of our evaluation appraisal period, and we have to tell the state whether we're going to update or not. And folks, our plan was done back in '92. We talk about incorporating the vision plan, we incorporate all this other stuff. It is, the whole thing's got to be trashed, to be honest with you, and to get us back to an even keel. So we're going to be spending some time next year. I'm going to be submitting a letter shortly here to the state that said that we'd be doing a comprehensive update. The one thing is, we have a year to do it, but I'm sure we'll, to get the plan done. And so we're already working on the schedule of how to move forward on this. So I think it'd be very beneficial to the city, even though Growth Management Act's been really watered down a lot, I think, from the city's standpoint of what we've done. It really behooves us to do, get a plan that has some, means something, rather than what we have right now. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Mr. McGary.
Public comment on this? Seeing no public comment, a close public comment. Further council comment or motion, as you see fit?
Motion to approve.
With the amendments.
With the amendments of the timeline.
Thank you.
All right, I'll second it. This requires a roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
All right, that'll move us to 4A2. An ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, amending Section 2-301, subsection 2-302(c) and Section 2303 of the Code of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, relating to the Code Enforcement Board hearing, hearing notices and interpretations of code provisions, providing for conflict and severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date, Mr. City Attorney.
This is your final public hearing on this. These were the changes prompted by our, for some clarification, mainly on the authority of who can interpret the code when it goes to a contested hearing at the Code Enforcement Board. We did add even further clarification since the first reading. We're calling it designated administrative authority, and we actually defined that at the end and came right out and said it does not include the Code Enforcement Board. So we think it's pretty well-covered in the future. This was discussed with the Code Enforcement Board. They were kind of split on whether or not they thought it was... split on whether or not they thought it was a good idea, but I think they understand where the council would be coming from. They want the people that are familiar with the subject matter that's being discussed and that were involved with the drafting of this, different pieces of legislation, to be the ones that decide what does it mean. And ultimately, through that process, the ultimate decider of the interpretation is the city council, which is obviously the best, where the legislature that adopted the law is going to interpret it finally, if it is contested.
This turn.
Just a question. I did not see the Code Enforcement Board minutes in discussing this issue. Has anybody else seen those, or I just missed them, or certainly, are they, I think, before we've had on this, it should be made available to council?
I can get copies to council.
Thank you.
Did this also go through P&amp;Z?
No.
No?
It has nothing to do with P&amp;Z. It's strictly Code Enforcement processes.
One of them went through, okay.
I would like to table this ordinance until at least we've had a chance to review the Code Enforcement Board comments.
This does hold up our enforcement of the vacation rentals.
I hear no second to the motion. So therefore, I open it to public comment. I see no public comment. Further council comment?
Did Code Enforcement make a recommendation on this?
I don't remember that they actually took a vote on it, made a recommendation.
Okay.
It was really just discussed. It was pretty much a given that this was going to be adopted by the council.
So this is a council action, not necessarily a Code Enforcement?
Oh, yeah. Code Enforcement is just the board that's being regulated by this, you know, by this legislation.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Hearing no further comment, I'll call a motion. Mrs. Bach?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes, passes 4, 1. All right, that'll move us to 4A3. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 60, General Provisions and Appendix, definition of Plan 3, Land Development Regulations in the Code of the City of Vero Beach, in order to provide clarification and updating of certain texts and definitions, providing for conflict and severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date requested by the Planning and Development Director. Mr. McGary, your comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just briefly like to go over the draft ordinance before receiving, answering our questions, going through public input. At the first reading of the draft ordinance, I indicated to you that this ordinance was still going to go through further revisions. It had to go through the Planning and Zoning Board, and we were still, the city attorney and I and outside legal counsel were looking at the language in it. So we cautioned you, there would be further revisions made to this. In preparing the draft ordinance, the primary emphasis was on clarifying the city's vacation rental prohibition. However, at the same time, we tried to include some other amendments to the code to clarify it. The primary concern of the attorney, and the planning staff and me, has been to ensure that any amendments we did that pertain to the prohibition on vacation rentals not go beyond our city's historical interpretation application of code that was in place prior to June 1st, 2011, which is the vesting, statutory vesting periods established by the Florida Legislature. This concern was even made more prominent based on a webinar presented recently by the Florida League of Cities. Many cities throughout Florida are worried that making any amendments to their existing regulations prohibiting such rentals may jeopardize their vesting. So that was one major concern. One reason why we went through many revisions on this before we ended up with where we're at. In fact, we have one more revision since submitting this agenda to you. Briefly, the most significant amendments included language that specifically states if a use is not listed as a permitted conditional or special permit use in a zoning district is prohibited. This has been standard understanding of common zoning law. If it's not expressly allowed, then it's, or it's stated that it's a use, then it's not allowed. But we wanted to put that in the ordinance anyway, just to be clear on that. There were changes to several definitions, such as daycare services, in addition of a definition for family daycare, to be consistent with the Florida statutes. We've had some problems with daycare and the leasing. We've had people-- daycare is generally a conditional use in our district, so we need to differentiate between those that are exempted and those that have to go through conditional use. We added some use to the definitions for the three residential structures, single-family, duplex, and multifamily structures. The floor area definition has been revised to make it easier for both the staff and professional designers to follow through and avoids unacceptable or poor design to get around the rules. So, this will save a lot of time, and it really doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't really impact why we have floor area ratios. The guest house and transit quarters, we went through, we've made some more minor revisions. I've handed that out, has that been handed out to the council that I'm asking? Mr. Komet and I looked at the other day, and we said, "Well, this isn't even English." So, we decided to make another revision to make it clear. So if you look at that language, that's what we're suggesting. It really, it adds, we talked about before, the bedrooms and the "and," but we make this language, hopefully this is more grammatically correct and understandable. So, asking that to be added. Probably one of the major definitions in here were the terms "guest," "transit," and "transit occupancy." These are terms we use in the guest house and transit quarters, and these are fairly well-defined, and these are very much in line with what we historically applied. So we feel, this makes this very transparent, clear to the average citizen when they look at this. The Planning and Zoning Board had reviewed this. The only thing they hadn't seen was this other definition that we revised, but it really is not substantially different than what they saw. They recommended unanimous approval to draft. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I have a question. Presuming this were to pass in the next little while, are we prepared to begin enforcing our--
And I was going to mention at the end, if you adopt this, we will move comprehensively, we'll do it a proactive basis, you know, consistent with my personnel resources and what we can do. The problem we had in the past is we were filing complaints, and I think that makes unfair application of this. It's better if we can maintain, you know, we'll still take complaints, but if we're just being dragged around by two or three individuals or complaints, it really tends to make it more difficult for us to, you know, equitably enforce this. So we will start, in fact, I'm going to have a meeting this afternoon with my Code Enforcement staff to go over the protocol and what kind of procedures we would follow in doing this, and what kind of evidence to do this kind of thing.
Well, I'm sure that'll be welcome news to some of our neighborhoods if this should pass. Public comment on this, please?
Mark Mutcher, again. My only comment on this doesn't have to do with the ordinance itself, just that if you read the item three, it gives you absolutely no clue at all what you're talking about. It doesn't say short-term residences, or short-term rentals, or anything else for that matter. This could have been about concrete plants, or landfills, or anything else. So I would just ask that in the future, you give the public, in the title, some clue as to what you're going to talk about.
Yeah, I think that's a very good comment. I kind of thought the same, and I almost, after I read it, tried to add that clarification, but of course, your comment is actually quite germane, I think. Mark, thank you very much. Council comment, please? I'll entertain a motion.
I certainly don't want to monopolize it. I'll just say, I know we've been dealing with this short-term rental issue for quite a while. I mean, I have rental houps in my neighborhood--
I know you do.
Yeah. I see every day, you know, those issues are there. So I realize that there are some push to move this forward as quickly as possible. However, I am concerned about council setting a precedence of bringing ordinances to the council prior to bringing them to advisory boards for review. You know, if we brought it to the council once, and then you take it to the advisory board, they go, "Well, why are we looking at it? Has the council already approved it? That's where they're going forward?" You know, then I think it's an insult to all our volunteers and giving their time and effort and saying, "Yeah, we want to hear what you want to say," but not really, because we've already made up our mind. So I would hope in the future that we would bring these to the boards prior to--
Yeah, may I add, my suggestion, and I think that's very valid, that was brought up at the meeting, would be to say that we want to go in this direction and direct the Planning and Zoning Board, working with staff, to come up with the ordinance, rather than, and I know you wanted to expedite this, but, yeah, they're supposed to be your advisory body, and I would concur with that. I work with them closely, so you understand.
I certainly don't want them to feel disrespected or think that we--
Exactly.
Yeah, I do value their--
Yeah, they were very supportive of the ordinance, but yes, they would like to thought that, you know, you would have directed, "Hey, would you come up with, and work with staff, come up with something?" Yes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
One other thing, in terms of the stuff that's on the internet that's advertising short-term rentals, what happens with that? Can you get to that or not?
We will be using that as some of our evidence to get in there. That helps us identify. We, I don't want to disclose all our methods. I don't mean they're illegal, it's just that this is a very tough cookie. Once people, because they know how to play games on this, so you don't want to disclose quite everything we're going to do, but certainly the internet would be one that, and we use that for like warnings to get, you know, to do, that's a start. We also have the permits that are supposed to be handling, so people with permits are automatically in violation, from the state, that is. All right?
Do I have a motion? All right, I'll make a motion to passes. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I'll call a motion. Mrs. Bach?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes, it passes five, nothing.
Thank you, council.
All right, it's 10:51. Do you want to do a resolution, and before we take a 10-minute break, or would you like to take a 10-minute break? Council's option. All right, I guess we're moving forward. B, a resolution, B1. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, amending and adopting the City of Vero Beach Personnel Rules, Appendix B, Drug-Free Workplace Policy, Providing for an Effective Date, requested by the Human Resource Director. Jim, how do you want to handle this?
Yes, real quickly, what we're doing is conforming our drug-free policy in conformance with the Florida Department of Transportation, as well as the Florida Workman's Compensation Law. As you know, as public entity, we come under totally different rules and regulations as to how we have to, A, protect the employee, but at the same time, protect our worksite. So, this is in conformance with all of that.
All right, is there a public comment about this one? Seeing no public comment, is there any council comment or a resolution, as you see fit?
I just spoke with Ms. Manis on this issue, and it really is just updating it to the laws that, you know, mandatory positions, there weren't any additions other than what was required under the statutes, and I move for approval.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Bach, would you call a roll?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes, it passes five, nothing. Okay, Resolution B2. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, requesting Governor Rick Scott to task the Department of Economic Opportunity in providing funding to the Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, or to otherwise facilitate appropriations of funding for the FDOT to assist local governments in Florida Treasure Coast with matching funds to retrofit FDOT stormwater outfalls with modern pollution, reducing technology to help alleviate pollution from entering the Indian River Gouge, providing direction to the city clerk, providing for an effective date. Do we have staff comment on this? It says what it says.
Yeah, this was what, Mayor, you had mentioned, I think, last meeting. The Treasure Coast League of Cities had formulated, basically, they just limited it, though, to baffle boxes. And speaking with our engineers, and Mr. Falls, and Mr. Messer Smith in engineering, they suggested we broaden that, because there are things that are sometimes better than baffle boxes to use. And we just kind of tweaked it a little, because, quite frankly, we could never figure out why it was the Department of Economic Opportunity might be wanting to give money to the Florida Department of Transportation. So we'd added a little thing about, "Well, otherwise, let's, you know, maybe give us some funding." And these do key in on the FDOT outfalls, so that's, you know, a good basis for, hopefully the state might kick in some money to help improve their own outfalls, which I understand from Monty, that the city does contribute runoff into those outfalls.
This is Turner.
I'm still perplexed about the Department of Economic Opportunity being willing to give FDOT. Could anybody--
I don't know. It came to Tammy, I guess, from the league, and just, here's a resolution. And I think Sebastian adopted something similar, so.
I would imagine they probably think the Department of Economic Opportunity has funds to direct this direction, if it came from the League of Cities. They've probably got an idea of sourcing of funds for this. I would imagine this is a coordinated effort by the Florida League of Cities. I'm just, does anybody know?
Okay, from the mayor.
It came to us in that, in that way. How many cities are doing it? I have no knowledge whatsoever.
It's worth a try, I guess.
I think that's the bottom line. I think you're right. Worth a try. Is there a public comment on this? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll make a motion to approve it. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Bach?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes, it passes five, nothing. Okay, that brings us to Resolution B3. A resolution of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, authorizing the purchase of city fleet vehicles, authorizing the execution delivery of additions to the municipal lease purchase agreement with based on financial group, Kansas State Bank of Manhattan, NKA, KAS State Bank, for the purchase of fleet vehicles in the amount of $961,643, authorizing the city manager to take all steps necessary to finalize and implement the terms and conditions of the lease purchase financial agreement, and providing an effective date requested by the Finance Director. Jim, how would you like to handle this?
Yeah, just a couple items of notation here. One is, as you know, we've been a little hesitant since we had the economic downturn to really update our fleet and what we were going to do with it. And so this allows us to do that, and also fits within our five-year capital plan. So it gives us, and as you'll notice, it's public works, recreation, as well as police, but it allows us to really update a lot of our equipment, puts it on that five-year plan, and at the same time, fits within our modeling of the five-year capital plan that the council has adopted.
It has an additional cost for interest over a period of years. What are those numbers, Jim?
I think it was like $46,000, $49,000 of interest, which is the cost of doing the business. It is a 2.6% interest rate, which I think is very good for the use.
And we have a lot of old transportation equipment.
Yes, sir, we have some that are as old as 15 years that will be. And this will not increase the size of the fleet. The fleet will remain the same size it is now. These will be put up for auction and bid, as we do most of our equipment that is aged out of the fleet.
All right, we'll have, I'll ask for an initial public hearing on this. Public comment, there being no public comment. This one will come forward for public hearing again on January 20th, 2015.
No, sir. This is just a resolution that doesn't require a public--
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped on one. All right, council comment?
Just one comment. I mean, traditionally, I believe we are moving away from purchasing vehicles, where we had in the past, and now moving towards leasing?
Well, actually, we still purchase the vehicles. At the end of the term, we own the vehicles, but we are doing the leasing that allows us to upgrade, at one time, a larger percentage of our fleet, and with what we see as a very little cost additive in order to do that. But at the end of the day, we own the equipment.
So at the end of the lease, this is like a dollar buyout?
Yeah, it's a lease purchase.
Lease purchase.
Lease purchase, okay.
Yes, sir.
Further council comment or a motion, Mr. Turner?
I have some questions, please, Mr. Mayor. We're replacing 16 police vehicles. How many other vehicles do we have?
Please.
Is that the entire fleet, that half the fleet? I was trying to say how many?
The answer is, I'm not sure what that number is of police vehicles.
On the police vehicles, we had budgeted to replace 16 vehicles across four years with an outright purchase. They were the only ones we didn't budget for municipal lease purchase. What we found out was that we can replace all 16 of those that were programmed for the next four years this year, and still end up with five years' worth of payments cheaper than the total dollars we had budgeted. And in terms of whether they have more, if they do have more they're planning to replace, they are not within the five-year capital plan that we have in front of us right now. So essentially, we're accelerating our five-year plan into purchasing them all this year and paying for them across five years. If they have more that they want to have replaced, those will have to come forward in the coming budget year, because they're not in the five-year plan right now.
Cindy, do you know what our fleet number is in the police department?
I don't, and I don't know that Monty does. Do you?
I don't.
No, I don't, and I don't see the chief here, so.
Now, this all--
Now, this also includes, like, your crime scene investigator, I mean, so--
Parking enforcement vehicles on there.
No, I mean, that was very thorough, the description of the vehicle. I'm just trying to get an idea. Are we replacing, you know, the whole fleet at one time, and is this going to put us in a position, you know, further down the road that we're going to have this huge, you know, expense at one time?
Actually, well, no, actually, the police department is one of the few areas where we have actually continued to replace vehicles for the last five years or so. In other words, in this most recent budget year, I think if you look at the five-year capital plan, there was about $170,000 worth of vehicle purchases.
There were six, I think, maybe.
Yeah, and there was a few the year before. I mean, obviously, each police officer has a vehicle, so that would lend you to a number more like 60 or 65, but they have not been on a replacement hiatus, and so they have spent the last five years replacing--
I certainly wouldn't want to cut the police off at that point.
Yeah, so they, I don't, we'll get you the answer, but they haven't been in a, you know, a 10-year dry spell with no new vehicles.
Well, there's probably a quarter of the fleet there, more or less.
I thought we had like 30 or 40--
Yeah.
--vehicles.
Right.
It's around 40.
Because we don't have one per officer, but we have enough, my understanding.
Per shift plus an extra.
Okay, just a concern, yeah. What's a concern about, yeah, we're just replacing a great deal all at one time.
My understanding is this is the tail end of what they need for the next four to five years because they have actually been keeping it up over the last five years, so.
Thanks.
Good question. Other questions?
Yeah, I do have a couple more questions. In Monty Falls, I guess a memo to Mr. O'Connor, it says, "The vehicles in this first group average 15 years of age. In the final replacement year, that group of vehicles will be 10 to 11 years old." I just don't understand the statement. I don't know what you're trying to say.
We're replacing the oldest vehicles first. When we get to the fifth year, the vehicles that were replaced will not be the 15 to 16-year-old vehicles, the oldest ones we have now, they'll be 10 or 11 years old.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion. And our goal--
That I understand, I was going to say, just when I was reading it, I just couldn't figure out what you were trying to tell me.
We're doing the worst first.
Okay, which is, I think what we need to be doing. I do have a question, though, about brands. I found it real interesting that we're buying a Chevy half-ton truck and a Ford half-ton truck. We're buying a Chevy cargo van and a Ford cargo van. We're buying Nissan minivans and a Ford minivan. Is this strictly preference to which department heads using it that we're buying different brands or, I mean, I would think for consistency, maintenance, certainly staying with the same one, or just spread it out to our friends. I don't know.
No, it's my, these are all done off the Sheriff's Association contracts with the vendors approved, and we picked the best price of the vehicle that was used. I don't have the specific of why a Nissan van versus a Ford van might be one better than the other, it's just the way the pricing worked out.
But we're getting two Nissan vans and one Ford van. I mean, we're buying, yeah, what I'm saying is that if the Ford half-ton truck is a good price, why aren't we buying two of them? Why am I buying a Chevy half-ton truck? You know? So pricing, that rationale doesn't fly.
We would have to go back because there's actually two areas that we get pricing from. One is the state contract, the other is the sheriff. Now, I don't know the differential between the Nissan and the Chevrolet, but--
You have three different vehicles, like I said, that you're buying and two different brands, so that's--
Again, the only thing I would proffer, and certainly we can get back to you, we did not include the full documentation in the package because it's about that thick, is that--
Thank heaven, because we have plenty--
You didn't want it. On the state, on the state contracts, each vehicle that won a bid, won the bid for very specific vehicle specifications. And so those state contract schedules say, you know, this kind of a pickup truck with these specs, the winner of the bid is the, you know, Chevy this from Alan Reed Chevrolet. So we can certainly get you that backup information, but that's how the state contracts and the Sheriff's Association contracts work there. Each contract is, and Monty can help me with this, about this thick, and depending on the very specific type of things you want the vehicle to do, there will be a winner and a vendor who has the low price, so.
Can we just break those down and maybe use that as the example, the Nissan versus the Fords, and show the differentials of those?
On the minivan, yeah, cargo van and the half-ton truck. Well, the truck, maybe something spec, you know, is particular about that work, but on the face of it.
Thanks.
All right, public comment. Mark, please.
Mark Muescher again. I think Pilar brought up a very good point right there, and it's not only pricing, the dollar. I think from a fleet management standpoint, and as a former automotive engineer and backyard mechanic, I'd say the standardization of parts and service skills and everything else would be a good-sized factor as opposed to a few dollars difference on the price. So I don't know whether you have an inventory of parts for every vehicle you have, or you go to the auto parts store to get them when you need them, or how that works, but I would think rather than having, as she said, you know, a Ford half-ton truck and a Chevy half-ton truck, you'd want two of each, even though in some configuration, you might spend $10 more.
I think we got some clarification.
I'm glad Mr. Muescher brought that up. What drove this process? We were trying to look at a way to get our fleet vehicles to an age where we didn't have any major repairs and have some value at the end of the lease period. So when we go through this process, the goal at the end is to have five-year-old vehicles that we are then auctioning off to have funds come back in to repeat this process in the future. What that does for us, it gives us that first five years, almost everything under warranty with the mileage that we use those vehicles of. So the maintenance that we're going to have on those vehicles in that first five years is really just oil changes and lubrication. So we won't have a serious inventory of parts that we have to maintain for vehicles like we do now. You have a 15, 16-year-old vehicle, you're doing a lot more to it each year than changing the oil to keep it on the road. So that's what drove this process, and, you know, it doesn't give us any heartburn to have a Nissan van for planning versus a Ford van for the warehouse, since we're just going to be changing the oil.
But then the whole plan, this is the first I've heard of this, that the plan is, is that at the end of this lease, that we are going to auction off these vehicles and--
The whole goal of this, as we started looking at this years ago, was to try to find a way to get our fleet costs down, and to do that, you have to cut your maintenance costs and get the age of your fleet newer.
I just hadn't heard that this was, yeah.
We discussed this in budget.
Or as you know, we looked at having it contracted out, and we talked to Enterprise, it's our contractor. The problem we have is liability exposure associated with police cars and some of these other things, and it wound up that we were not going to really reduce the number of man-hours we had to spend in the shop because they were really, they were doing minimal stuff, yeah.
Once again, still back to my basic question, if, you know--
We'll find out the difference between one Nissan truck and a Ford truck.
All right, any further public comment? A close public comment. Any further council comment?
You know, I have to agree. I just, I got to wonder how, the decision process of why we pick one vehicle over the other. Is the buying process such that we just go with what the state recommends on some of these?
Again, without a lot of detail, you know, it is specification-based, and the fleet management people look through the state contracts based on the needs that were identified to them by the various departments. You know, the buying process from, so the state contractor, the Florida Sheriff's Association procedure is that they put out very specific specifications for different classes of vehicles to achieve different functions, and then everyone bids against those, and there's a winner for each one of those types of vehicles. So again, certainly, if you would like, we can get you detailed vehicle by vehicle as to what the need was that that particular one fulfilled. But if you look at the state contract, it's almost like, it's like a catalog, you know, here's this kind of a truck that does this, and the winner was Alan Reed Ford, and here's their pricing for this configuration.
That's where my question lies. So the state made this decision?
The state goes out and does this bidding process and puts together a package that then we, the local government, can simply add on to. In other words, we can purchase at those same prices and terms and conditions without having to go through the bidding process ourselves. It's what we commonly refer to as a piggyback or an agency bid. They've done all the heavy lifting, and now there's a catalog that we can order from, and we can have the same prices given to us without us having to go through that same process, and Alan Reed or whoever will honor the prices that they gave the state for local governments as well.
I'd like for clarification, just--
No, I get this, but I mean, we believe that that is a cheaper process of purchasing than for us to do it ourselves.
Oh, yes, sir, trying to draw up specifications. And it could be, it could be something as simple as a tow package.
Yeah, I was going to say tow packaging.
This truck is associated with a tow package, this is one price, this one does not have the tow pa, and if we modify that, then we obviously are going against the state--
Or specific equipment might work better with one model versus another. I mean, just, just having been around pickup trucks, towing capacities, and the equipment they hook up to are different per model. So what that section needs, maybe the Nissan fits it or the Chevy rather than the Ford. I mean, there are differences amongst--
And sometimes, again, if you've got a minivan for planning where they're going to throw a few signs in the back, and you've got a minivan for the warehouse where they're going to throw fairly substantial parts in the back, the minivan that the warehouse is getting might be too much gun for the planning department. So it's just, and within each winner in the state contract, you can customize that because there are optional pieces that you can add on or not, or not add on as you need. So again, we, I'd be really more than happy to, I don't know if you want to see it for all of them, but maybe pick two or three representative vehicles and provide you as a follow-up with the state contract documentation that shows, you know, a little bit more about how vehicles are chosen and how the state contract works.
I was going to say, I'm sure the state contract is fine. It's a group type of purchasing to obtain the lowest cost. What I'm concerned about is the city's preferences in selecting those. I mean, obviously, any department manager can put down, you know, "I want to surround system," and this is ridiculous, please, I'm not accusing, but I mean, "I want to surround system radio in my, in my minivan," you know? And to get that, I need to have this type of minivan. Obviously, that's a ridiculous thing. I just want to make sure that we are, once again, doing it properly, being consistent.
Certainly, the state contract ones tend to be pretty stripped down. A few years ago, I purchased some trucks off a state contract price where they didn't even have automatic windows. You had to do it the old-fashioned way, which caused a lot of consternation in our planning department, so.
Well, they have it at least in Florida, they all have air conditioning. And yeah, I know, yeah, I mean, I know the state gives it, give it to you that one way. Once again, you know, I'm looking out for our tax respect that we're doing it--
Would you like to see the specs on all of the list, or are there specific ones we can answer the question for you?
No, there's three vehicles that we bought two different brands on.
Okay.
Okay? That is the minivan.
Minivans, okay.
Um, what's the other one? Minivan, the cargo, a cargo van.